Welcome everyone, um, we are gonna get started here. Looks is the online going, okay? Um, so in the case of an emergency, you can exit the building out the back of the room, either door and go either direction down the hallway to the exits. Do we have any suggested agenda changes? Okay, we'll keep it as is. Um, first is open to the public for items not related to the agenda.
Am I, as, are members of the commission also members of the public?
Uh, I don't know, Michael, you're always so complicated. Is it, um?
I had a question that relates, that's not related to the agenda.
Okay.
Which is that there was quite a lot of confusion about, uh, in, in the public about the official map. Some people seem to think it was the official map, not just the city center official map. And I noted that there's a road on the official map that runs through the Hubbard Park. And it's something that I think the commission should look at quite urgently because it's causing some concern.
Okay, um, we do have our view of the official map on our work plan. I believe that was just what we had just adopted that as part of our work plan recently. Um, but it is a good note, um, for the audience as well. Um, later in the agenda, we do have an item that relates to just a portion of the official map. Only the portion specific to city center, so, um, if you were expecting to be talking about the bigger official map, that's actually not on the agenda.
I wonder if you could explain. Press the button?
Oh, you have to push it again, I guess, sorry.
Oh, it was on, okay, um, my name is Jimmy Lees. Um, this, I think there's some confusion and I hope you can explain what an LDR is or land development regulation and what an ordinance is. And what's the difference? So, I, because I'm bringing up ordinance and that's not on the agenda. Uh, I think there are some people who don't understand that if there's a change in the land development regulation has no effect on permitted projects. But would an ordinance amendment affect permanent permitted projects? That's my question. In other words, once an ordinance is adopted, is it effective throughout the city on everybody? Because we know the land development regulation won't be if the permitted developer prefers the old land development regulation upon which they got their permit. And, and then, and then related to that is is there any plan to consider noise, the noise ordinance part of the nuisance ordinance? So that we can update that too.
I, I think, and I'm gonna ask for staff help making sure I don't say the wrong thing, but I think one thing to note just upfront is that, um, the, us on the planning commission, our purview is, um, is the first body to work on the land development regulations and then kind of pass those, um, recommendations on to the city council, but with ordinances, they fall under the purview of the city council, so our body, um, would never take an initial look at an ordinance because those are the city councils. Um, sometimes the city council has asked us to work on an ordinance, um, when they have questions or want some help with it, but that is one big difference between the two and how it relates to our body, so.
Sure, so, um, I guess I'll answer the, the two questions, but in the inverse order. So, um, on the subject of noise, um, back in the spring of this year, uh, the city council received a presentation about, uh, noise associated nuisance ordinance and, and sub, and so on. And staff talked with them both about the components that would be part of the land development regulations and the components of a nuisance ordinance update that would be part of an ordinance. The broadly in this instance, the difference being that the land development regulations typically look at development activities and ongoing permanent, um, uh, impacts of an activity. You know, if there's a, um, something that is constructed like a manufacturing facility to forever make a sound. Whereas a nuisance ordinance is a more instantaneous activity. Uh, so the council at that time, um, uh, gave the, uh, nod to go with a two-pronged approach of having the land development regulations updated and also coming to the council with an update to the nuisance ordinance at the same time. Because the land development regulations have to go through the planning commission first, this part had to start first with the goal that when you deliver yours, there will be also a parallel update to the nuisance ordinance that is in front of council at the same time, uh, later this month or early, uh, August. As to your first question about, um, wh- what can take effect when? I think that's a very case by case circumstance. Ordinances cover everything, all sorts of topics. And it would have to be a, a specific question reviewed by the, uh, city's legal attorney, um, a legal counsel because it's ordinances cover a huge breadth of things and so their, their implications and impacts really need to be looked at case by case.
So if the land regulation is updated.
Genie Zagorski, if a land ordinance is updated, then it may or may, then the, sorry, sorry, sorry. If the land regulation is updated, then an ordinance may or may not be updated based on a land regulation. Because what you're saying is they can be completely different, okay. Is, do I have that right? Is that what?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So if the land, okay, okay, good, good.
They, they typically cover either completely separate areas or, um, are, um, coordinated but not duplicative of each other.
Okay.
They, they cover different purposes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, um, items not related to the agenda? Okay, um, I believe we're on to announcements, um. So I had two, one is that, um, we, I wanted to offer like a very specific thank you to our, um, outgoing planning commissioner, Paul Angles. He served us for many, many years, both on the planning commission, multiple committees, um, as well as a city counselor. Um, and it was a pleasure to work with him. We have a card circulating, we're gonna send him as well. Um, to thank him for his service and, you know, he's not here tonight to hear it, but, um, just wanted to acknowledge that publicly. And we're very excited to welcome a new member of the planning commission, John, um, who's here tonight. And, um, John, I don't, I know I didn't say I was gonna put you on the spot, but if you wanted to introduce yourself, um, just to the, to the group, it might be nice if you're willing to do that.
Sure, I can do that. Uh, thank you. Uh, quickly, I just moved over from the development review board. I was there up until a few weeks ago. Uh, during my reappointment, they said, hey, how about the planning board or planning commission? Uh, so here I am. Um, I've been a resident in South Burlington for about six years. Before that, we, I lived in New Jersey for about twelve years, six of which I was an elected official and also served on the planning board there. So there was some overlap between, um, the planning, what the planning board function was there and the DRB and planning commission here. So I have experience with both sorts of, uh, skill sets. So I am, uh, looking forward to getting back into it. Thanks.
Great, well, thanks, John, we're excited to welcome you. And just to remind you, you are full members, you can jump right in at all moments, even though it's a funny one with the hearing today. So, those were my announcements. Does anyone else have any up here? Any staff announcements?
Just one quick note, um, that you may already be aware of, but, uh, councillor Mike Scanlon stepped down at the end of last month. Um, he and his family are relocating and so he, uh, had to make the tough choice to step down. The council interviewed several candidates and has appointed Anne Pugh, um, former state rep who served for thirty years in the house for us and, uh, in addition to many, many other activities. Um, and so she'll be serving out the remainder of his, of the, his term, which was set to expire next town meeting day. Uh, anyway, so, yeah, we're very excited. She joined last night for her very first meeting and just as John is a full member, as is she, so.
She, um, also served on the, a planning commission in South Burlington for quite a few years.
Well, yes, a while ago.
In fact, she might have been when they started it or something. So she's had lots of experience.
Great. Okay, then I think we can move on to item number five, which is our public hearing on the draft amendments to the land development regulations and, um, a portion of the official map. Um, so if someone wants to move to open the hearing.
We need a motion to move to open the public meeting, I so move.
I'll second it.
Is that acceptable? Do we need to say the numbers?
Do you want us to read everything out?
I think there was a motion in your packet, so if you could read that, that would be appreciated.
Yes, let's do that.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, on favor of the motion? Hi, that was unanimous, very good. And it's nice to have everyone here in person tonight, so we don't have to do the roll call vote, which is nice. Um, okay, um, do we have anything that staff would like to talk about before we jump in? Um, and just to note, um, we're gonna hear a little bit about an overview from the staff. Um, and then, um, we will, um, go through some other things before we open it up to the floor for the public, just so we have a few things we're gonna do first.
Yep, so, um, we don't do this every time, but when we have a package like this, that's, has a lot of different topics in it, we do like to run through everything that's included in the set of amendments so that both planning commissioners can be reminded about everything we've been working on in the last six to eight months. And also members of the public are aware, at the highest level, at sort of a topic level, what is being, um, presented in the land development regulation amendments in this round. Um, this won't be presenting language that is available on our website, on the, um, city of South, South Burlington website. But this is just running through that sort of high topic level, um, outline of what these amendments include. So, in this, in this set, we actually have, um, seven amendments, sets of amendments to the land development regulations and one official map amendment. Um, importantly, this is seven topics, this is not seven amendments. So there are a lot of text changes that go in each of these, but these are the high level topics. So minor and technical amendments, which is, um, very small changes that are generally not, um, big policy decisions. And then technical amendments that are things like typos, formatting, um, and things like that. calculation of heights is a, um, examination of the technical nature and how heights are measured in South Burlington. Um, supporting uses in commercial areas. This was raised as a question by some members of our business community who are located in the tech park area about, um, what kinds of uses can we allow? Michael, do you have a question?
Yeah, would it be, when you get to it, would it be a good idea to put the spotlights up so that they can read it?
So I have more slides. Is that what you mean?
To put the spotlights up on the screen.
Oh, I think she's saying that this is just an overview and that there's other slides.
Yeah, I made, I made PowerPoint slides from the spotlight, so they're, they're even condensed from that so that they're easy to read on the screen.
Um, I think it's actually a really good note, um, just to say that the spotlights that have been on the website are a really nice overview. And I, I know, I really appreciate that staff's like helped put those together for us because it's been a really good resource that we didn't always have in the past.
Yeah, so just for the public, the spotlights are, you know, one to three pages that go through sort of in plain language each of these, um, amendments, one through seven and then one. Um, and ex- explaining what each of them are instead of having to go through and read all the regulations line by line to see what's happening. Um, so those are also posted on the website along with the rest of the text. Uh, so supporting uses in commercial areas is about, um, well, about supporting uses in commercial areas, what, what things do, does a modern, um, commercial park need to be successful in, in the future? Um, a table of uses update, and I, I'll go through in these in more detail, is a move to consolidate our commercial uses. We had many, many, many listed and this is sort of a, a change in approach to, um, the commercial uses. Form-based code update is, um, started from a task from city council related to, um, more or less a, a decade look back on the form-based code. So that's the city center area, um, and what updates were needed for aesthetics, for getting the density that we're looking for, for getting the pedestrian oriented, um, environment that we're looking for as well. Bedrock removal noise regulations is related to constru- regulating construction. Um, and bed, bedrock removal plans. Zoning map update is a few changes to the citywide zoning map and the official map update. Uh, I should say the zoning map update is, is generally little tweaks in changes from, that resulted from our last round of updates, so it's sort of cleaning up a few things. The official map update is only related to city center. Um, and it's just, the official map is where planned public facilities like streets and paths and things will, uh, go in the future. So this is the smallest text in the whole thing, I promise. This is the minor and technical amendments. As I said, the technical amendments are things like typos, grammatical errors, formatting issues and correct references. Minor amendments are a little bit bigger than that, but they're related to the language of, of how something is written, but not, um, big policy decisions. So this is the list of all of the minor and technical amendments that are the minor, yeah, the minor and technical amendments above the level of typo that are, are included here. And this list is also in that spotlight document that you can find on the website. So as you can see, there's a lot of little things that are just cleanups here and there about compliance with state law, um, cleaning up some unclear language, um, add, uh, allowing ADUs to have basements, small, small things here and there throughout the LDRs. calculation of heights is, again, sorry for the amount of text on this, but there's two pieces to it, the grade standards. So how do we measure the grade? How do we measure where the ground is versus the tallest point of the building? Um, it's a shift from average pre-construction grade to an average finished grade, aligning, um, grading standards and definitions with language used in other codes like the international building code. Um, and reducing the overall number of defined terms, so making it more streamlined and clear. Building heights, um, and accessory dwelling units is some tweaking of allowed heights for residential and mixed-use structures, allowing accessory dwelling units to be built into accessory structures. For example, having an, um, an accessory dwelling unit as an apartment above a garage. Um, and then clarifying, uh, and simplifying the procedures for measuring different roofline designs, different ways that people have the highest point in their roof or a curved roof or, or whatever else they may design. Supporting uses in commercial areas, as I said, is, is updating what is allowed in the commercial areas to reflect, um, more of the needs of modern businesses. It also allows, um, temporary accommodations or hotels in a limited way to support commercial uses in those areas. So there's very specific limitations on how and where you could have a hotel, but it's, um, in response to a desire to have sort of business-oriented temporary accommodation close to some of these, um, manufacturing facilities and other sort of big commercial areas. Uh, the table of uses is primarily related to the commercial uses table, so not the residential or the public or quasi-public uses. In the current, um, adopted version, there are many commercial uses that are overly complex, that overlap and or, and or are poorly defined. Um, use, some uses that are functionally similar are separated, making it more difficult for, um, say, a, a commercial landlord to swap out a, a small coffee shop for a, a bookstore or something like that. Some things that have very similar impacts can, are divided in use and would require someone to come in for a site plan. Um, this is looking to alleviate some of that, um, procedural hurdle. And it, the current uses don't necessarily reflect actual impact on neighbors in the community, which can vary on many factors, including scale, amount of trucking, how much outdoor use there is, um, and similar factors. So you could be a, you know, corner store and you can be a Walmart and still be considered retail be, in our current system because there is no scale built into it. So in our draft, basically, we're trying to alleviate those, those questions. Consolidating use of, commercial uses to reflect the impact on the community and on the neighbors, including a scale component for uses where it's appropriate, reducing the number of uses, reduces the number of boundaries between them. Um, so that can simplify permitting and reduce the number of, of instances where someone needs to come in for a site plan just when they change commercial tenants. Um, and then also reflecting modern commercial uses that have varied designs, uses and needs. So something may be a coffee shop, but also sell records or, you know, things like that where it's more than one thing happening in the same place. It was much more difficult when all of these uses were chopped up and this is partially what we're trying to alleviate in this. So this is the, the uses that we would have remaining. Um, consumer-facing commercial, which is the stores, restaurants, um, things like that. Accommodations, hotels, um, general commercial is kind of a catch-all for everything that doesn't fall into some of these other categories. Motor vehicle focused commercial is what it sounds like. It's commercial uses that focus on motor vehicles. So that is both car dealerships, but also auto mechanics, car rentals, car wash, things like that. Commercial with outdoor impact, or things like, um, lumberyards is a good example where you might have a very small building, but a large outdoor impact where you have trucks or, or contractors or, um, just people working outside that has a different impact on people, on the, their neighbors. Trucking-centric commercial is something like FedEx, where you've got a lot of coming and going of, of logistics services of, of trucking. Commercial outdoor recreation, um, would be something like a, a disc golf course or a golf course or, you know, things like that that have a different impact because they are sort of quasi-public. Um, can be an, an amenity for the area, but also do have some different impacts on the neighbors because it is not contained inside a building. Medical and social services, so that is the traditional medical office, but also, as it says, some social services that often now can be bundled in the same clinic or, um, in the same building with a few tenants. And so this is pulling those together because they're, they are similar in many ways in how they function. And then aviation uses is what it sounds like, uses that are related to aviation. So that is both actual flight, but then also, um, you know, the, the restaurants in the airport that serve the flying public would be included in that. The flight instruction school would be included in that. Form-based code update, um, some highlights, it expands the T-five and the T-four areas. Those are some of the sort of considered sub-districts of the form-based code area. Increases them both the minimum required heights and the maximum heights, but maintains some transitions at the edges of the different districts. Ad- address doorway spacing glazing requirements that allows for grand entrances and frontage civic spaces to improve the street level experience. So changes based on feedback that we've gotten from developers and designers and members of the public about, um, the experience of, of walking down a street and what does that need to be looking like. Um, similarly, adjusting the building breaks and facade designs and roof lines to allow more variation in building design and more flexibility and creativity. Um, improvement of a pedestrian street type, so of, of having a pedestrian street be a type of street that a building could front on. Um, giving credit for balconies toward both site amenities and facade design in varying, varying circumstances to encourage, um, developers to include balconies in their, in their buildings. And adding an elective master plan for large properties. So a master plan is, you have to, when you have to plan the entire property, even if you're doing a, a portion of it so that you can thoughtfully be doing, um, planning for what you're doing next instead of inadvertently blocking off options in the future. Bedrock removal, um, currently the LDRs have standards for excavation not related to development, like gravel pits and quarries and performance standards for ongoing noise related to a business. Um, so it doesn't have standards related to construction. Um, the noise ordinance exists, but it had not been updated. And as Paul had mentioned before, that is something that is in the purview of the city council and is being discussed sort of in our, in the other body. In the draft, um, the move is to adopt standards for development and construction-related bedrock removal in tandem with those no, updates to the noise ordinance at city council and requiring a be, a plan for bedrock removal in certain circumstances and providing standards for the DRB to balance when considering that proposed plan, including methods of removal, location, noise cost and other considerations. Uh, zoning district boundary changes, there's a handful of small changes, um. Let's see which, if any of them are, they're all sort of small tweaks. There's, uh, the area behind the Doubletree changing to be included in the form-based code. In the that's form-based code change of T-four and to T-five along Dorset Street. The northwest corner of Market Street and Heinsberg Road changing to T-three. Um, Joy Drive, uh, when the zoning districts were, were cons- were consolidated last fall. Uh, we've inadvertently put Rice High School in a district that doesn't allow educational facilities. Um, so that is, this is correcting this by moving that line of the zoning district by one parcel. So it's moving it from the low-scale neighborhood, which is to its north, to the high-scale mixed-use, which is to its south on, on Joy Drive, so that's moving that boundary by one parcel. Um, and then correcting an error of, of, a, a small parcel that should have been designated as low-scale neighborhood, not NRP. And then the official map changes are changes, uh, in the city center form-based code area only. Um, updates to the planned roads and paths to reflect changes in the LDRs. So that's related to the form-based code update amendment that I discussed before. Um, there are some changes in where road, roads and paths are planned for the future. Um, and updating the connections around and connecting to the planned bike ped bridge over, um, I eighty-nine. And that was a lot of me talking. So as I said, there's a lot more detail of these available on the website, both the spotlights that are the plain language versions and then there are both clean versions and redlined versions of each section of the LDRs that are affected. So that is all available on the city website.
Thanks, Kelsey. Um, so there were a few things that we wanted to highlight that are some recommended changes. Um, I noted one, um, which I think is a typo. We had, I noticed in the table of uses, um, the new draft where we've kind of combined everything together in the MSN district. The medical slash social, um, category. It used to always say it was P dash TO, so permitted in the transit overlay. And we had talked about, um, not making a change to this, but I think the TO got deleted accidentally and we didn't notice it. So I think it's a typo because we didn't discuss doing any kind of policy change related to, um, you know, where that use was related, where it was allowed. We did talk about it at Tilly Drive and how we weren't, we were specifically not making a policy change. And I think we didn't notice at the time that that TO had gotten misplaced. Um, so I guess I just wanted to point that out, that I, I don't think we were trying to make a policy change, I think it was a typo, so. Um, and then, Kelsey, did you have some things that you wanted to point out that were some recommendations?
Yep, let me just find the document that I need to find. Excuse me. Um, there are a few things that we had. Oh, it's not in the same place. Sorry, just give me one second.
Oh, it's not in the same place. Sorry, just give me one second.
Um, while Kelsey is working on that, uh, Jessica, I think that's right, that, that was a typo. Um, and I'll, I'll bring it up in a second. I think the same thing also applies to general commercial, um, which captured offices and things like that, that that was allowed in the medium scale previously, the medium-scale neighborhood, but only, um, in the transit overlay district.
Okay.
Um, so I can bring that up if you want to see it.
I hadn't noticed that one, so.
So I'm just gonna bring that up while Kelsey is working on her piece. So I know that this is a lot of red here, so hang on. This column right here, MSN, medium-scale neighborhood. So that's the, um, uh, neighborhoods that tend to have, uh, along Kennedy Drive is medium-scale neighborhood, Corey Hill Road, and then, uh, a few other parcels like south of the interstate to the, on the west side of the, of the highway that's, that's unbuilt. Um, so if we look through what the current allowed uses are, there's, uh, a variety of sort of residential and then lower-scale ones. And then you see that office general and office medical were transit overlay only, meaning the only portions of that district that are also in transit served areas. And then when we scroll down to the new ones, um, the general commercial and the medical and social services, um, likely should have had that. Um, I think that was a typo. Um, if you wanted to keep the small-scale general commercial, that might be, that might be appropriate, um, because it does kind of line up with some of the allowed uses from before. But we would encourage that the medium scale was not really, um, previously allowed in that district. So that's not really a conversation you'd had.
Okay. Yeah, we wouldn't make a decision about that right now. I just, we just wanted to bring that up, um, in case the public wanted to make a comment.
The, the definit- definitions that Sandy Dooley sent in, uh, her email, did they come too late to be included? Or, there was an email from her today, in fact.
That was a public comment.
So we'll cover that in a few minutes.
Okay.
Um, so a couple of things. Um, one, just, there were a few, uh, there was a few cleanup changes in the, uh, calculation of heights section. And there were also some added diagrams. Um, so those were in your redline and clean that were under proposed staff edits. These are not things that were warned for public hearing, but it's since the hea- hearing was warned, we've found a few additional things to continue updating. So, um, adding a set of diagrams and a few, uh, changes to the terms that are shown in the redline. Um, and then the definition, so adding an, adding a clear definition of an educational support facility. This is related to both the, um, Article seven is the zoning district for the institutional agricultural district. Um, primarily, this is related to UVM. Um, it is post, post-secondary education. So an educational support facility, um, we've proposed and discussed with UVM, including this definition for having an educational support facility, and then including that in the table of uses, um, a little differently than it had been in your warned packet. So instead of referencing other listed commercial uses, it is listing uses that are more, um, descriptive, sort of the types of activities that would be happening in, in areas, in, in uses that would be considered an educational support facility. And then reflecting this in the table of uses as permitting educational support facilities. Instead of, our old table had permitted without a footnote eleven and it had some, you'd have to sort of cross-check a few things. This is just a clearer way to deal with all of the things that are not direct sort of classrooms, but are related to, um, post-secondary education. Um, the planning commission also asked us to consider, um, how to address large indoor recreational and fitness facilities. This was discussed at a previous meeting, but you just asked us to take a look at it again and see if we had come up with something, um, cleaner and a little better. Um, we didn't. So the, the idea is that, right, right at the moment, the best I, the best is to keep it effectively the way it is currently allowed. So you're allowed to have indoor recreation facilities, um, in the mixed IC. So this would be keeping it that way, um, by allowing or by calling recreation and fitness facilities with large amenities like pools, tracks, courts and similar as general commercial. This is something the planning commission discussed at a previous meeting. Um, this is, there is still a potential that we are, as staff, are concerned about, about something that is a, a draw for other, from other areas for recreational purposes in a large building. Um, taking up space that, in an area that is primarily supposed, should, should be reserved for large, um, employers or manufacturing facilities and other sort of commercial things that support our other businesses in the area. There's a certain level of economic activity that can build on itself. And, um, that's something that we want to foster in that area. Um, later in this meeting, you'll be hearing from Alon Blanchard about the economic development strategy, uh, strategic plan, sorry. Um, and so we would recommend that the planning commission leave this as we had discussed it previously, um, but then potentially take it up again as a, as a question to reexamine after that, um, economic development strategic plan is, started rolling in, into implementation. Um, there were two footnotes, six and seven, that were left in the table of uses itself for the food hub, but it, but actually, um, the text was omitted from the actual footnote. So Food Ho- Hub would say, you know, P with a footnote six or P with a footnote seven in a few places. Um, the footnote, or Food Hub use has otherwise not been changed in any way. And the footnote six and seven only appeared in the Food Hub use line. Um, and we intentionally did not touch Food Hub because of some, um, changing landscape, uh, at the state level, both at the Supreme Court and at the state legislature related to agriculture and municipal regulation of it. So we left it alone and that was the intention, but inadvertently omitted the text of the footnote. So we recommend putting that back, so that is in that redline that you got. Um, city center form-based code about street trees. Um, the draft currently includes thirty feet maximum spacing for all form ba- for all of the form-based code. And af- but after further review of best practices and street design, both street design and horticulture, um, staff recommends adopting, uh, the best practice for a main street as thirty, um, so the T-five. And then for the T-three, T-four and T-three, which are intended, intended to be a little bit, uh, lower scale and, um, not quite as much of the core of downtown as a fifty-foot, uh, spacing. And that-
Which brings it back to what it's been for the last decade.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that would be-
So, so just to be clear, the, the only change to what has been the case is to on, right out here, T-five, make the trees closer together. That's the change.
The opposite.
The, ultimately, there would be no change to what the current adopted policy is.
Oh, okay.
So there, in the drafts, we had tried to simplify just by, by using the same number across the board. Here, we're proposing to return to exactly what the policy has been for the last decade.
Perfect. Um, in LDR twenty-five oh-six, after review of this, by the city attorney, staff recommended a few minor changes for readability and legal clarity. Um, in the listed sections, those are available in that redline that you received. Um, there's just some wording and a few typos that were included there. Um, in the official map, there are two additional impro- uh, proposed changes, improving the connectivity on the west side, um, of the planned bike ped bridge over one-eighty-nine. So not immediately where that bridge would land, back on the land, um, but a little farther west to make the connections into, uh, the rest of the bike network and into Burlington, um, more clear and more usable and more logical. Um, and so that was, that was included as little red clouds for, to show those areas on, in your packet. Um, finally, I think finally, um, the inadvertently, we have omitted a allowance for mobile home parks when we were, we've been doing a lot of work on multiple structures on a single lot. In reworking all of that, we, um, re-prohibited mobile home parks inadvertently by not exempting them, um, that is illegal. So we would recommend, uh, correcting that by, uh, including this language back into, uh, three oh-nine A, which is that multiple principal structures section. Yep, and that is all I've got for staff recommendations. So as I said, all of that, this is just we're writing, walking through it in a narrative way. All of those are shown in the redline, um, that you were provided.
Okay, then, um, I mean, I would recommend we open to public comment, unless there's some kind of burning question up here. Okay, um, we are going to open for public comment. Um, so I think one thing to note, um, about the public comment is that, um, you would come up and speak into the microphone. Um, and that this portion is not like a back-and-forth discussion. It's really us being listeners. And then, um, once we've gotten all the comments, we'll have a discussion up here about what we've, we've heard and, and things that we've learned, um, kind of throughout our process. So, um, people are welcome to, um, come on up. Um, if you are joining us online, we are not monitoring the chat, but you could unmute and turn your video on, um, and then we can know that you want to speak to us. Come on, come on up. And we try not to get into time limits necessarily, but, you know, we try to stay around the two-minute mark if possible.
Okay. So, I'd just like to talk about the bedrock noise issue, um, as you-
Sorry, Ju- Jimmy, could you start by just introducing yourself?
Oh, Jimmy Lys. Okay, so I'm gonna just talk about the bedrock noise issue. And as everybody probably knows, noise is a health, safety and welfare issue. People can be severely hurt by a single blast of noise. You can actually lose hearing, but also lower noise, lower amounts of noise can be very disruptive for, um, your mental health, for example. And also, there've been recent studies showing that there's, people suffer vascular disease, stroke, increased levels of stroke and dementia and, um, heart disease. And, and there are other things that are affected by repeated exposure to noise. And during building, if you've got months and, let's say, three months of, of jackhammering or what's even louder is top hammer drilling. That's what they use to drill the holes for blasting. And that takes all day long to drill forty or fifty holes for each blast. And I said that wrong. It takes, let's say, four hours to drill the forty or fifty holes for the first blast in the day. And then another four or five hours to, for the second blast in the day. Because they usually have two blasts per day. So, so the, the, the land development regulation here has several problems. One of, it says, divides it into de minimis and then not de minimis. So de minimis, um, they don't have any tasks at all. They can just go right ahead and get their permit. They don't have to provide any information. But if it's not de minimis, then all they have to do is provide information. There's no regulation, but this is supposed to be a regulation. There's nothing required of them except to provide information. So they can't fail if they just fill out the information on paper. They can be as loud as they want. There's no regulation. And then if the DRB says, gee, that sounds really loud, that's gonna hurt people. This is an area of very high public use. Maybe it's near a school. Maybe it's near a daycare, maybe it's near homes. Or people are outdoors playing, playing or on the recreation path. And there's no regulation, there's no standard. Now, developers are very good at meeting standards. They can adjust the power level of their equipment to lower the noise level. Or they can do other, they can, they can put, um, blocking, insulation, sound insulation to lower the noise level. They can do things. But if there's no standard, they're not gonna do it because nobody's telling them that they have to. So they can get their permit, their standardless permit. So what's the purpose of land development regulation if there's no standard? If the DRB says, gee, that's too loud, they can go into court and win because it's arbitrary and capricious. There's no standard. So what would be a standard? Well, there is one standard. And you actually do have a standard for de minimis. If the jackhammering is more than forty hours of hydraulic jackhammering, it can no longer be considered de minimis. And then they have to fill out the answer to the task, you know, the information. But they can still do it for more than forty hours. There's no limit there. But what about a decibel limit? The courts understand decibel limits. The courts implement decibel limits. Though, the courts will reject if it doesn't meet the, the standard. And the city attorney knows what that standard is, ninety decibels, and it's too loud. But even seventy decibels, it's a welfare issue. It's an issue for convenience and annoyance and just driving people crazy. So this is something that could be put in the regulation and the developers can meet the standard if you're willing to put it. You don't have to be more extreme than developers themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other, any other comments? You can come on up. Yes. If anyone wants to make a comment, they need to come up. And then you would also start by saying your name.
Yep. Jeannie Zagursky. Um, I'm just agreeing with everything that Jimmy Lys just pointed out and referring to the same issue of twenty-five point oh-six, the LDR and the bedrock removal. I think setting standards, um, and regulations are extremely import, important, not just for level of noise and decibels, but for duration of time each day that this goes on, especially near neighbors, neighborhoods that are already built. Schools, everything that he just said. I, I definitely agree. That's all I wanted to say.
Great.
Thank you.
Hi, Amanda Hannaford is my name. And I had, um, two questions and a comment. I'm just clarifying questions for my own edification. The first one was the commercial outdoor recreation. I was wondering if that included like outdoor concert venues or just other kind of outdoor things. I was just curious, is that? And you don't have to answer it now, you can answer, you can answer it now. Or you can answer it as the chairman says, either now or during discussion.
Question, I think we can.
Um, I would, I would say likely yes. Um, so something that is, uh, a concert venue is entirely indoors would not, um, be that, obviously. Um, but something like an outdoor concert venue, I, I, I would have to look at sort of the details of it, but that would be, in my mind, some of that falls under that category.
Okay, I was just cu- curious as I was listening to your, um.
And just to, sort of to, a question from earlier in the meeting. The venue would be the subject of the land development regulations. There's a separate ordinance about the playing of live music that is an ordinance of the council that sets hours and, you know, all sorts of things about the, the volume of music and things like that. So that's another example of how two parts and pieces come together.
Thanks. Um, and the other was just the questions about trees and, um, the, um, in the T-five or I guess anyplace. Um, and I have heard in the past that places where trees have been- Places where trees have been designated as required to be planted. Were not sufficient to support the continuing life of a tree. And I was just wondering, um, it sounds like the arborist, the city arborist has determined that the trees will survive in that area.
Yeah, so I.
In those conditions.
I would say there's, there's two pieces to that. One is um, that best practices of spacing the trees farther apart. Um, when you have uh, certain species of trees, like if you planted them thirty feet apart, like that's actually not going to be good for them in the, in the long term. With their, you know, canopy reach and all sorts of other things. The second is sort of outside of the scope of this round of LDRs, but we have um, landscaping requirements. That we've had some conversations with our arborist about. Should that, right now it is just installing things and then releasing a bond after a certain number of years. But um, a project that we're looking at doing into the coming year is um, a little more of the um, potential. For applying landscaping money of that budget that's required towards um, proper maintenance. And, you know, pruning that's required and, and other things to, to make sure that those things do, do survive. Um, currently, the landscaping is required to survive at three years. And there's a bond that the land developer is required to, to put up for, to be held money. Um, and they can't get that money back unless those, that vegetation has survived for those three years. Um, so there's sort of a two-part thing. It's something that's already in our LDRs. And then something that we're looking forward um, to be looking at in, in the next year.
Did you say that at thirty feet, that was not large enough? There's not enough space for survival?
It depends on the species of tree. I think there's different species of trees that require different spacing because of their, you know, their shape and other things. Um, but there are some species of shade tree that if you plant them thirty feet apart, it's actually, can be too close.
And then it comes, that comes into the subject of a downtown where you typically want trees that are a little bit more vertical. So that the businesses can be seen, whereas when you get into more neighborhood deals, you want bigger canopies that are going over the street and things like that. So the spacing winds up being different.
So the trees in, that would be planted in T five, thirty feet a pe- apart would be trees that would survive in that condition?
Right.
Under those conditions.
Yeah, cool.
Um, it's just always so sad to see these trees die time and time again. I figured you had taken that into it. Um, and my final comment is um, about the standards of decibel levels. It just seems kind of to make sense that if you don't have standards and decibel levels. Um, it's um, it would not be as effective. So I would like to support that also.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else have any more comments? Um, and I can't tell if anyone's joining us online, but if you are and have comments, um, you could unmute. Or, um, okay, it looks like we have one. Um, I can't see your name, um, but you can go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Judy Hitena Wright. And I'm not gonna spend a lot of time. I just wanna reiterate that I agree with everything that. Uh, James and Amanda and Jean said about decibel, decibel levels and everything they said. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online or in the audience have anything to say? Looks like.
Could I please say from here?
Um, so.
Unfortunately, we can't because the state law is that meetings have to be available online and so everybody has to be able to hear. Sorry.
You've, you've come this whole way. To be here tonight, I think it's worth the extra. No rush, no rush.
Right, well, don't go back to that seat, just sit in front.
Good, good suggestion.
Is it ready to go or do I?
Hello, my name is Monica Farrington. I live at Four Green Dolphin Drive in South Burlington. Since nineteen seventy eight there and since nineteen seventy one at fifty four Baldwin Avenue, South Burlington. I just want to add my voice to everything that Jean said and Jimmy said. Um, we need some regulations and we need an enforcement system for the regulations, please. Noise pollution is definitely bad for our health. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Final synopsis.
We'll just sit right there.
Take an aisle seat.
Take an aisle seat. That's okay. Sit with my friends.
Um, other, other comments? Or anyone else online?
Michael, this would be a good time to share the note that you were referencing earlier from, um, I think it was from Sandy. So you could, now would be a good time for that if you want.
Well, the, the question was, she had, I think, two suggested language for, for two um, definitions. And I'm not sure whether they were presented to us before or whether it was just in the last few days. In which case that's, this, it's not, it didn't come before this was warned. So that's my question. Did it, did they come before we warned it?
I believe we just got, so you're referring to the email from Sandy Dooley? I believe we just received it um, today and it would be part of our public comment. So I think it makes sense to acknowledge it now. As you're saying. Um, she is suggesting in her written comment that the definition of long-term care facility. Would be altered to remove the word supportive from the second sentence. And I, I think we, maybe we agreed to it, but it didn't make it in.
Oh, okay.
Potentially, I mean, in, in any case, it seems like the version, oh, there we are.
So there were a lot of changes that she requested bef- with some discussion um, with Kim and I'm forgetting her last name, Fitzgerald. Um, before the warning happened and then this is one additional, uh. My understanding is it's one additional small change that she, that Kim mentioned to Sandy a day or so after. The June tenth planning commission meeting where the, this copy was warned. Okay, so there was other, there was a, another re, there was previous reworking that was considered by the planning commission before it was warned. And this is just the one yellow word, supportive.
What is she suggesting in the second one? Adding that sentence?
I, I think that's just showing that it's the bottom of one page and the top of the next.
Oh, oh, okay. It's just for context. Okay, so it looks like one change um, would be her written public comment. And.
It does appear to be superfluous and changes the meaning of the second sentence.
Um, and then um, I also did, or we as collectively, um, I guess over the weekend. Received a public comment from Roseanne Greco, um, president of the South Burlington Land Trust. And it was specifically about a portion of the city official map that um, the hearing tonight's not covering. Um, it's related to the Underwood property, um, which is kind of outside the area that's been warned for tonight. But I wanted to acknowledge that we received that also and it relates to what Michael had brought up. Those were the ones that um, I saw in the email. Um, has staff received any additional written comment?
Not after the date of the warning, no. We've had other, other conversations with stakeholders through April and May and the beginning of June, but nothing since then.
Okay, um, our public hearing comment um, period is still open. If anyone else has anything they wanted to add before.
Sorry, Jessica, just a very quick clarification that con, uh, one of the staff recommendations did come from further discussion with UVM. So technically, public comment that happened after the warning um, about how to make the educational support facilities definition work properly. For them, but that is part of the staff recommended red line that was in your packet.
Yeah, and, and we knew that that conversation was gonna be happening. We had talked about that before.
Just trying to be totally transparent about that conversation.
Okay, um, here, let's make sure I'm not missing something in our order of business here. Okay, so I'm not hearing anyone else raising their hand or speaking up. Um, so I will um, kind of end the, the public listening period. And. I think we would close the public hearing. I'm giving a pause here to make sure I'm not missing anyone. Um, so the process is gonna be, we're gonna officially close the public hearing and then we're gonna move on to our next agenda item. Where we have our public, our planning commission discussion of um, potential changes. Just to clarify the order of operations here. Um, so do we have a motion?
Read that, if you like. Motion two. I move to close the public hearing on the draft amendments of the land development regulations, LDR twenty five dash oh one through twenty five dash oh seven. And to the official map, OM twenty five dash oh one.
Okay, um, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, um, very good, unanimous pass. So we can move on to item number six. We're going to be, we're going to consider the feedback and possible action to approve. Draft amendments to land development regulations and the official map and the accompanying reports for submission to city council. Okay, so this is um, really a general discussion up here about, you know, are there things that we wanna? Change or add into the red line draft that we have, we've had presented.
Now, do, can we make changes before we send this to the city council?
We can.
Do we have to have another?
Yeah, this is a really good question. So um, the process is that, um, now that we've had our public hearing. We can make any related changes. We can't just add a whole new topic, but you know. Reasonably small changes um, to any of the things that have been warned. Um, and then we can move them to the city council directly. You know, as long as our reports reflect the same thing, you know, our reports still make sense. Um, and then at the city council level, they would have a hearing and be able to get additional comment. So if we've changed something and someone still wants to make a comment, they would be able to do that at the city council level.
Yeah, I ask because the comments about the bedrock removal piece seem. To my hearing, it seems that we have to actually rewrite it. Because the things are missing, standards. Um, and the things that Jimmy Lys and um, Ms. Hannaford raised. Seem to indicate that we didn't do a, a great job. And we need to redo it.
I'm, I'm not sure.
No, no, go ahead, I'll, I'll go after you. Uh, yeah, I mean, I guess, so I'm really, yeah, I mean, there's clearly a fair amount of public interest in that specific area. I guess, so I guess my question would be, my question more for staff is sort of what was, sort of what was the kind of thought process? Behind going with more like a kind of reasonable standard versus like a kind of specific numerical standard? I'm just, uh, not necessarily condoning or the, I'm just sort of curious what thought process went into it.
Sure, um. I think that s- so as a starting point, the removal of bedrock can take a lot of different forms. It can be the corner of a project, it can be a large area, it can be something that is known in advance as part of a design. It can be something that is discovered later. Um, the methods for removal of bedrock can differ. Sometimes it can be blasting, some kind, it can be. Uh, doing some design changes so that it's lessened the impact or not having it. Uh, sometimes there are times when uh, the chipping is, is required. Because it's say near a gla- gas line or something like that. Um, so as this is an area that the city has not regulated in the past. The approach that staff recommended is one that has the applicant demonstrate. How they are balancing for key goals for the city in terms of types of impact. And then presenting why they believe that their blasting plan is best, achieves those. And then gives the DRB the authority to agree or disagree with that and then impose conditions. Um, a reasonableness standard similar to that, um, but much less detailed is what Act two fifty uses. Decibels is a tricky subject because um, there's many, many, many different ways to measure decibels. In terms of how frequently, what is, is it in the average, is there maximum? And then um, that in and of itself may not necessarily, um, at least in our view. Um, having the, a lower number of decibels may not be the least impactful. Because it may mean that something continues for much, much longer, for example. Um, so that's why this is the approach that we recommended. Um, but this is your decision.
Um, Duncan?
So, I, I was calling, kinda asked, but I was gonna ask, but I'm just looking at it and I, I noticed um. On, was it the second, second page demonstration, number six and then that has A, B, C, D. Is that the four things you were talking about that they're looking?
That's right.
Limit duration, limit level of noise, limit impact, limit cost.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that's where the, if there were more teeth to this, that's where it would be put? Or?
Well, that is our recommended approach to how to do it by saying these are four important things. You show us how you propose to limit these four things. Um, it's a different approach than a numerical one that would say cannot exceed the following.
But if, if we were to put some limits in some of those, you know, say duration, you can only do it for ten days. I'm just saying, is that, I don't, I don't know, is that, is that where we would beef it up if we were gonna beef it up to tread?
You, so, so you could, I think that um, the way that, wha- what you would have to assess is. Wh- what would be the implications of putting a maximum on? So let's say it was, can't be more than X number of days of one method. That means that probably a different method will then be employed. And, you know, is that in all circumstances the right call? So I think that's, that's the tricky circumstance and also, you know, it may, it would then also. Is it ten days per individual site or if it is a multi-phase project for that is, you know, let's say, I'll pick on. O'Brien neighborhood where they've got, you know, six years of, of development, do they only get ten, ten days total? Um, I think that's where this gets tricky to put a numerical cap on it, but you, you could look at such things.
I, I think that you can, you definitely should.
Can you, can you turn your mic on?
I, I believe it does make sense to put a numerical limit to the number of decibels. Because that is something that can be controlled. Um, you know, the type of um, blasting versus um, drilling. You know, there's different implications as to how much noise, but the amount of noise at the, at the point. Where the blasting is done is not, is what's critical. It's the point, it's the, the noise level at the closest residential property. Um, and the other piece that, I know Duncan's gonna hate this. But it's, it's very similar to the whole lighting question. Like, we currently allow five-foot candles average in a commercial parking lot. That is four times what um, a property in a suburban area is allowed by national ordinance. Uh, by, and, well, by ISNA uh, ordinance. So, you know, that's why I keep kind of harping on these issues. You, you need a number and it needs to be the right number. And the location of where that number applies, on an outdoor parking lot, the number applies at ground level. You know, in the case of a residential development where there's adjacent construction and blasting happening. The critical point is at the nearest residential property, that inhabited property. So I think, I think there should be a number, but I don't think you can def- I think the difficulty is. In saying you can only do it so many times. I think that's probably impossible to regulate. in saying you can only do it so many times. I think that's probably impossible to regulate that. But, um, but I think that saying that, you know, you shouldn't have more than this amount of decibels at a residential um, property is, is reasonable.
Yeah, you, you probably could set a time limit, but those, it would be breaks.
Yeah.
Not more than five days in a row, like, or not.
Not after six PM or not after five PM or something, not before eight AM. Something like that, you know, that kind of time limit you could put on it.
Yeah, I'm thinking of somebody who complained that this noise was going on for thirty days nonstop.
Well, it was probably really loud noise too. There's also vibration, you know, that, and, you know, like, I'm not quite as close as most of these people are to where the blasting goes on, but you can definitely feel a little whoop. You know, things, things move slightly, you can, you can feel the vibration from it. It's not, it's not annoying. And I think, you know, I'm pretty sure they're putting some kind of blasting blankets down on top of this when they're doing it. And it does tend to muffle the sound quite a bit, so I don't think it's unreasonable to put a maximum number.
So I, I just have a question. I just wanna clarify this, maybe with some question for staff, so there's the, the piece that's in Article sixteen, but then there's also the Appendix A, uh, performance standards related to noise. So in there, we do specifically have location, distance of fifty feet from a building or structure. And we also had, it's Appendix A under noise. And in there, it also limits the hours of operation. You know, it looks like it's, so I mean, so I guess I'm just wondering like how these performance standards relate to like what we're talking about in sixteen?
Yeah, so that's a great question and what, when we were looking at the subject more, you know, a little bit more globally as to, you know, ordinances and regulations, there's sort of three types of how noise can be existing. One is, it's, you know, a, a business and that business has a machine shop and that machine shop, it's the nature of that business to be always making that kind of noise. That's very classically a performance standard. There was an instance a few years ago, for example, um, over on Corey Hill Road where uh, the senior housing that was going in had a HVAC system that was gonna be right next to adjacent housing. It was gonna run twenty-four seven. So the DRB said, you know, you have to demonstrate how you get under the performance standards because that's a ongoing forever. At the other end of the spectrum are things that are, you know, people are playing their stereo at three in the morning and that's very clearly a nuisance issue. That's not about the use if somebody's, you know, having a party in their house. Construction noise is sort of an oddity because it is a temporary activity that then leads to a permanent thing. So the homes that would result from a neighborhood being built are not gonna exceed the performance standards, presumably. The construction of them is their own thing and so that's why our recommendation was to create a new section that deals with that subject area because it doesn't really fall easily under nuisance other than where nuisance says that hours of construction are limited to blank to blank every day. And so if you're doing construction at two in the morning, unless you've got an emergency authorization from the city manager, that's prohibited. Does that make sense?
And I, because kind of the second part of the question, which is, you know, you, we've, we know that city council is making some changes to the noise ordinance, which is separate and we aren't doing that. Is there anything that you think might be in the noise ordinance that also relates to this or that's what you're saying? This is very much just a separate thing just about the construction?
The proposed approach is that the anticipated the anticipated effects of removal of bedrock are dealt with in the regulations. If there is something that is done that is not following that which was approved, then that might fall under a nuisance ordinance, you know, if they were doing the things outside of normal, normal business hours. But the way that the, the two of them would dovetail is that the nuisance ordinance, uh, in the draft that council saw a couple of months ago would say that activities that are permitted and follow the the conditions of the development review board are not considered nuisances.
Okay, good. Yeah, so just wanted to make sure the three secret sections that talk about noise were, were clear.
Now, something takes place and they never got their, an approval to do it, that's a different category.
So my, my, I guess my question is, reading this appendix, how does that relate back to bedrock removal? Cause it looks like.
Right, the appendix language re- is really clean up because council was asking for a cleanup of the nuisance ordinance and there's some things that our performance standards predate us ever having a nuisance ordinance, so we're taking the opportunity to tidy that up. They're really not about bedrock, it's about loudspeakers and things like that. So at the city attorney's recommendation, the changes in Appendix A are really just about nuisance that is not really about bedrock subject.
So I think if I, yeah.
To make more clear, sorry, to make more clear, what is the role of the land development regulations? What is the role of the nuisance ordinance?
Okay, so the appendix is more of an ordinance
It's more of an ordinance thing, but it's in the land development regulations, so it has to go through your process.
I think, well, I think what I got out of it is that Appendix A is really about the ongoing use that would happen every day in the building. So if we're, to make sure we're not permitting a building or thing that would always have that noise. So this is more about, once the thing is built and operating, it's more about operation, I guess.
But you'd wanna know that before you issue a permit.
Yeah.
Why it's part of the land regulation.
I just wonder, cause it's three separate things that all sound, sound, sounds similar. Donna and then.
Is there, is there, is, is there any place in the ordinance which defines that noise higher than a certain decibel level is considered nuisance? Um, or is construction noise that unique? That it wouldn't, it wouldn't fall under the same guidelines?
Um, let me take a look. So i- it's the nuisance ordinances are, are sort of a, uh, they, they deal with the subject of nuisance, which they're, they're sort of a two-part. There is, there are decibels associated with it, but it's also a question of unexpected to the, you know, having a music glaring at three in the morning is, is, is one kind of activity. Having, living next to Shelburne Road where there's a lot of trucks going by might be loud, but it's not a nuisance because that's, that's, that's the road that it's on. Does that make sense? So yes, but it, but it sort of assumes the construction.
Yeah, the issues come up before, you know, with the airport, you know, and things like that and, you know, and, and a lot of people talked about how, well, you know, this is a very high level of noise, but it happens for a very short period of time, but it's daily. Versus if you live next to the highway, you know, it's not as high a level of noise, but it's nearly constant. And how do you weigh those factors?
And some of us have both. Yeah, I'm next to the highway and the airport. Um, so, uh, Khan was, and then, yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess I, when I sort of see this like giving up to DRB, like sort of putting it on the DRB and sort of say, oh, is this a good reasonable plan or not? If someone were to hand me like, say, for example, like a, uh, like, oh, I want to like have a slight exemption on this height requirement, you know, like I'm sort of standing this hill and it wouldn't be as obvious. Like, that's something I can kind of like, you know, see the plan and like, oh yeah, I kinda see that, sort of feels reasonable. If someone submitted me a noise mitigation plan, I would have no idea whether or not it's reasonable. I mean, I'll be honest, I have no idea like what, how, like how loud these methods are, like how uh, like what could be done, how much is gonna help. I mean, they can give the numbers all they like, but it's kind of maybe, it feels like, it feels to me like sort of to be able to assess whether or not these plans are, are doing a good effort and a reasonable effort to mitigate the noise impacts. The DRB needs some kind of specific knowledge of the best practices of bedrock removal. And I, I don't know if they have those or not, but it kind of makes me wonder if i- i- if we need to, like, it, it feels like at some point the DRB is gonna need to learn a bit more about, hey, how does bedrock removal work? What's kind of, what can you do to make it less invasive? And if we have that knowledge, would it make sense to sort of slightly more formalize and say like, hey, these are like our list of kind of best practices? If not, say, oh, we're gonna ban this one type of blasting, but you could maybe say, oh, here are kind of a list of best practices that you should choose from and sort of demonstrate how you've done this. And I'm fully aware that's gonna be work and maybe that is not something that can happen right away. But I guess it, it seems to me that if we don't have that kind of knowledge base within, you know, municipal, our municipality, it's not immediately apparent to me how the DRB would be able to assess these plans. Um, unless I am greatly underestimating the, uh, the knowledge of the DRB.
Um, just on one technical point of that, cause that's certainly a discussion for you all to have. The development review board has full authority on all parts of the land development regulations to invoke what's called an independent technical review.
Okay.
So, um, a proposal comes in on any subject, traffic or stormwater or whatever. The, um, DRB has the authority to, um, have a independent third-party technical expert review that proposal and give their comments on it and that gets charged to the applicant.
Gotcha.
So that is, that is a mechanism that exists across the board in the land development regulations.
Okay, that, that's good to know. Though I guess my, my fault would now be if I was ever handed any noise, I hope basically be to request that, cause I, 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 yeah, maybe it was, maybe there are people that know more about noise than that, but I guess I feel like I, for example, I don't wanna set the first person submits one of these to me, do we have to pay for technical review or something because I don't like, or, or is that, would that basically require it every time until they know, until they have that technical expertise from previous ones? They don't want to be unfair, say, and the first applicant have to pay for that. Yeah, no, I, that, that makes, that makes total sense. It just, yeah, I just, I, I worry this is, is a very technical field of blasting that most people don't have much experience with, but, but yeah, but, uh, that is, uh, good to know that that route does exist.
In, in the next session, section G, review and conditions of approval, they, they mentioned the Vermont blasting plan guidance document. Is that something the state develops and is that the guidance that the DRB would use to assess whether this developer is following best practices? I mean, I don't know if that has numbers in it or not. Does that have decibels and?
So, um, uh, I can, I can share that with you. That is, the, the reason it's referenced in this way is that that is specific to blasting, not necessarily other methods of bedrock removal. But it talks about.
So only blasting, not jackhammer?
Right, so that's the, right, so the state's blasting guidance document talks about a blasting plan must include at a minimum, uh, description, pre-blast surveys, blast monitoring, sequencing, procedures, including times, dates, hours, warning whistles, um, what explosives are used, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, that's the document that would, it doesn't say, it doesn't have s- standards of in and of itself in the blasting plan, that it is the components of one. Does that make sense? It doesn't say the maximum duration, it just says that you shall in your plan propose a duration.
Would, is it a real issue to, um, under six A? It just says you need to tell us the time of day, including morning, workday and evening. I mean, we're actually gonna let people blast in the evening? I mean, isn't there a way to have, I know we do with, in ordinances with garbage trucks, you know, they can't pick up stuff at a business before six AM, I think, or they're not supposed to, cause it's really noisy. And I know some construction, they start early, but hammering is a little bit different than blasting. I think, although it can be really irritating if you live next door, that's for sure.
So certainly, yes.
Like, time of when the hours that you can blast might be quite somewhat relieving and not overwhelming for a developer. I, I don't know.
Would, would that be something that would make more sense to add to an ordinance over, v- 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 versus a de- de- develop, DR, LDR level, like sort of amend the noi- so here we're already making noises amend the noise ordinances to have some kind of effect, as, as you mentioned.
Oh, I think it ought to be in the LDRs if we wanna have it applied to um, construction and not have it in noise ordinance, which is a whole nother regulation, but you wanted to say something.
Um, John had his hand up.
Unfortunately, I have more background with this than, than I would want, like to. One of the things that originally drove this to the council back when Helen was our chair and, and since with Tim, uh, is the long drive subdivision. And what they're doing over there is chipping. And just to put that in perspective, uh, cause I'm a couple hundred feet away from them and while they were doing this chipping, I had ninety-five decibels at my kitchen window for an entire summer. Four months, constantly, every day. You would hear it in your sleep. And what they had was an excavator, a full-size excavator that you sit inside and operate with a three-inch diameter bit that was about two feet long, chipping away at this rock. So you think chipping, which is a guy with a chipping gun, that's no big deal. This is, so one of the concerns that I have is under the de minimis standard, I can get behind letting him go out with a handheld jackhammer. It's not gonna create that much noise. Two is saying you can use any size piece of equipment you want for forty hours. I can tell you from experience, forty hours of listening to that is a lot. And it's not de minimis for the people that live there. I have a lot of trouble with giving the DRB, which I just came off of, a standard that has nothing to measure it against. We're not giving them any frame of reference. If I got this on the DRB, yep, we probably have to go to, to, you know, have them, the, the first applicant pay to have a technical review. And then we're still not sure what to do with it. At some point, I think we need to say too much is too much. Does the developer get to do whatever they wanna do regardless of the impact on the community? So where do we cap it? Where do we tell the DRB? If they can't get the noise level down below seventy decibels at the next nearest neighboring property line, they can't do it. Come up with another method. This just says, well, they'll look at it and as long as the expert says, yeah, they did as good as they could, we're gonna go ahead, we're gonna do this and some part of our community is gonna get impacted for months. In the case of long drive, it was four years of chipping on and off.
No, no comments please. We're discussing.
Uh, some longer than others, but the shortest one was probably about three weeks because it was gonna be a week. And then they didn't get it done and that was another week. And they didn't get it done, it was gonna be another week. And at that time, we're in the city council meetings yelling at the coun- the, the councillors to please do something. And this is what they came back with. And I'm fine with that. Uh, but I really do think, given the issues that we've had, we need to take a harder look. And my suggestion would be, uh, break this out of the submission to city council, send this back around for another review, let's look at this. I'd be more than happy to jump on a subcommittee to look into this and give this bedrock removal, you know, next time we do something, pass that along to city council because I don't think this is anywhere near right.
Have we, um, just as a question, I, I haven't heard, um, if we've had specific direction from council on a timeline for this one. Sometimes that happens in the background and we don't.
Um, so when, when the city, when the city attorney and I presented, I believe in February this year, this sort of approach of the ordinance updates and land development regulations, I think that they were hoping that it could be completed in the current fiscal year, i.e. the one that ended last week. I think that's a subject, acknowledging some of what John Um, I think that's a subject, that, a- acknowledging some of what John just referenced of. Um, making sure that we get something in place in a timely manner. I think that's, that's the extent of their guidance on that.
And so the only reason I say that, I, I like the idea, I mean, I've got some great notes on things that I think we really should add and, you know. But I sometimes wonder if like um, we're shooting ourselves in the foot if we don't have something in place. Um, so I'm just not sure of the order. Do we, is, do we. Make some minor tweaks to this so there's something now and going through council and getting more feedback? And then we can incorporate that feedback into a better draft that has more numbers. Um, so that if something comes in in the meantime, there is at least something. Pointing to a technical review and um. So I don't know, I'm not sure that that's the approach. I just wanna put that out there as an approach, um, knowing that it might not be good. And then I think the one thing I definitely wanna follow up on is, I, I agree, I work, I, a lot of my projects are dam removals where we're. Using that hydraulic hammer um, to chip away and it's extremely loud, like I, I usually have earmuffs and earplugs and um. But I have had projects where there's a small amount of bedrock knob that's encountered, that's. Pretty minor and maybe could be done in a day or, or two days during the regular work hours that maybe could be something. That feels like it could fit into the de minimis to be able to keep a project moving. I'm just thinking about like. You know, we're replacing a culvert under a road and there's a little piece of bedrock and they could get it out tomorrow. But is there a provision for something that's like a. Not a week, not a week, not at night. Um, you know, i- if we could maybe think about having number two be something that's. In a workday, no more than two days, um, kind of a thing to be able to keep a project moving if something's found. Kind of that we didn't know about, that kind of a thing, but you're right. All night long, forty hours or something seems like completely unreasonable.
It was just during the workday. It was just five days. Had it been around the clock, homicide would have occurred.
My question is, and I hear what you're saying, Jessica, is, you know, do we at least wanna have something on the books? But if, if we look at number six there and take A and B and put some, you know, put an actual limit. And B, put a lo- a noise level limit, that's at least something to get us started. Um, i- if we wanna, you know, pass this along, I think we could put some teeth into those two to at least have something. And then we can knowing that, okay, we may, we may need to come back and revisit this. Is that, I, I, I don't know how hard that is for staff to do, what, what's the?
The, the something is the tricky part of this. Right, there, there's, and um. The, there's different ways to measure noise. Donna referred to one of them in terms of. Where are you measuring it? Is it from the immediate? Is it nearby? Um, I think m- more difficult is you can measure a maximum. You know, what's the point of what, the loudest moment or an average? You can measure an average over a minute or an hour or a day. There's a lot of different things that come into. Um, and the, and while I'm, they sound like sort of little variables. They have pretty dramatic implications of which of those you choose. So, you know, using just a little bit of a, you know, silly example, a nail gun. Instantaneously can be very, very loud, but it's a nail gun or a, uh, a dump truck, you know, if it accidentally the swing gate hits. But that may not be indicative of what it sounds like for an hour. Or maybe a bunch of nail guns replacing roof in one day. You know, if they have twenty people on the job versus two people for an extended period, I think that's where this gets a little bit tricky. It's not that it's not possible, but it's not something that I, that I think. I'm certainly able to just pop it.
You certainly could put hours where they're active during the day, though. I mean, whether it's a nail gun or um, a blasting machine, it's still. There's a expectation of.
Right, and there already are construction hours, you could say that.
Why aren't they in here?
Cuz they're in the nu- they, they, all construction is in the nuisance ordinance, but if you could conceivably say that. Bedrock removal, I think construction can go till eight, eight PM, something like that. It could say. An earlier time, for example.
I mean, if we could say like eight to six.
Like, I guess, like, I guess they have a question for, you know, John, be, if, if we're, if we're shortening the hours. The number of days may also then go up as a consequence of that. And I don't know if that would be considered a worthwhile trait.
Uh, Michael?
I certainly not qualified to um, set any standards, uh, because I haven't read anything, I haven't read up on it. I don't know much about bedrock removal co- uh, standards, conditions a- and, and. What a, a, a construction company would have to comply with. So I think fiddling around the edges here. Isn't something that I could live with. I, I would, much as I hate to do it, but I would prefer. Commissioner Moscatelli's proposal to cut it out and do it over. And I would think we would need some expert opinion on this, somebody who, who knows the business.
Um, Donna and then Colin?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with what Michael's saying.
Can you turn your mic on?
I agree with what Michael's saying. Um, it occurs to me that there should be some kind of standards already written. And regarding this, is it possible that we can come back uh, next time with some, a look at what's. You know, what other communities have? Um, I'm sure, there, this must exist somewhere. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm all for not reinventing the wheel when it's not necessary.
In, we have not come across any in Vermont, just to be clear on that front. Um, Act two fifty has a standard, but it's essentially, it's reasonableness on noise. And that's about it. Um, so just, y- you won't find more detail in, in the act two fifty.
I wouldn't limit it to Vermont.
I'm, I'm just saying that as a, as an initial.
I mean, you know, there are noise mitigation, uh, there are ways to mitigate vo- the noise if it's uh. Too loud within whatever the, the distance is, the house is seventy feet away and. Or a hundred feet away and you can't keep it below seventy decibels. Um, but there are things, they look like blast, blast walls in fact, but they're much lighter. Um, and they are installed between the site, the blasting site and the, and the con- and the residences.
I, I, I guess, I, I, I am, I, I, I might, where I'm currently landing is, I am definitely, I've. Been convinced that I, w- we definitely do need to revisit this. I guess I'm slightly erring aside of, it would be very nice to, if we could fix this in the short term, I'm not sure. Maybe it is possible, maybe it's not, but I'm just worried it's maybe a bit more involved process and I guess I, I kinda come down the. I, I know strongly, but I guess I'm. Maybe my, in, 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 in the interim, until we can get a proper or like a more fleshed out version, this with more like perhaps teeth, more standards. That having a weak set of regulations in the meantime is better than no regulations, cuz at the moment we're, there's nothing, like there's nothing ever. And I agree that this current draft needs to be revisited and we could, so we figure out a way to strengthen it. And ideally be nice if we could strengthen this like immediately, but again, it. Sounds like staff already does some cursory glances and I'm not sure if we can do that immediately in a timeframe and it doesn't make a huge difference, but it might be. If this is something that's gonna take us a few months or maybe a year to figure out, if we have to bring someone in to figure it out, would, it would make sense to. Pass this one as is, but say we are going to in the near term. Fix this up versus just not having anything on the books in the near term.
I think it's better to have something rather than nothing, and I understand it's not perfect, but.
Okay, um.
But leave it at this, but with a commitment to rewrite it, uh, in our work plan and quite high up on our work plan.
Yeah, so this might be a, a moment for a little bit of a straw poll. And see what, what the group thinks. It seems, I'm hearing, um. So A would be. We would pass this along to have something, so we have something very soon. Um, with the commitment to um, add additional teeth.
But with a declaration about what we're gonna do.
Yes, with, with the commitment. And so it would be A. And then B would be to. Take it out completely and really make sure that we've gotten our technical input and have um, decibels and hours and, and things like that. Included um, before goes to city council. So, um, just as a straw poll, which isn't binding, just to, so we can. Um, who would be in favor of the?
A clarification on the declaration piece, are you saying that keep it in? And um, inform the city council that there's some real issues with this. And we would like their direction to. Um, address that ASAP. Is that what you're saying? And is that something like city, can we ask the city council president?
How, how do you define it?
You wanna weigh in? Does that sound reasonable?
Oh, we have two, we have two. Okay, Andrew, it looks like you've popped up first.
Sure, hi, um, you, hold on, um, let me just, let me just turn the light on, give me a second.
Oh, no, Tim, you might be out.
No, no, uh, if Tim wants to go, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Tim Barrett, City Council. Andrew, what were you gonna say?
Yeah, you can go, Tim.
Okay, so, I mean, staff can bring anything to us that you want to send through them to us and then we can respond to it and then. Uh, make a decision to affect your work plan anyway we want. So if that's your prerogative, please, you know, take that and go with it. Um, but you'd have to follow the direction of staff as well. So Andrew, if you have something to add, let me know.
I, I mean, my, um, yeah, I mean, if this kind of uh, came to council, my direction would be to. Go back and improve it, because I, I kind of agree with the comments that it doesn't quite get the job. Uh, doesn't quite do what I think the city needs. I, I think I would encourage the commission to. Um, send it to council with at least some tweaks around hours. And um, some decibel limit, um, to give it some more teeth and then it could be further worked on.
Okay, so that's a plan, that's a third option.
Yeah, that's a third option where we.
But I think that Paul said that's not all that easy.
The third option doesn't seem all that easy, so.
Yeah, it's not just a building height, we can just put a number out in the interim, I guess, cuz it is a complicated question.
You, you know, I mean, like I, I have all the respect in the world for Pro Paul and I acknowledge that, um, there's some. Learning that needs to be done, but um, you know, we, Laurie Smith and I did speak with a noise expert who recommended. Something called LEF MAX, um, for these kind of things, it's kind of an industry standard. That folks use, I think if you put seventy-five, eighty decibels measuring, using LEF MAX, there'd be something in there. Um, and it can be reviewed and tweaked in the future, but at least it would be something. That's, that's my perspective.
Go ahead, Colin?
I guess one of our comments, if we put something, if we sort of throw a number in there. Without like really, you know, consulting experts in a way being exactly certain the right number. Either it's gonna be too high or too low. And if it's too high, well, you know, it's still. At the moment, there's no number, versus if it's too low, that may be a de facto ban on blasting. At least in the short term until we can figure it out, which maybe that's what, maybe it's a risk we're going to take. Um, uh, but. Y- yeah, I, I, I guess it's, I guess, I'm more, I'm trying to think in terms of if we come with a quick number that may be an act, that may not. Exactly aligned with our long-term objectives. What is the risk of that number being inaccurate in the short term until we can do a better job versus the risks of not having any number at all? Is, how, how are we thinking of this at the moment?
Well, I can understand the blasting number might be a little problematic. But the hours when you can blast, doesn't seem to me as if that's. A huge technical issue.
I'd agree, yeah.
I mean, yes, it might extend it and then that's another issue, I guess, the um. The design review committee would have to um, consider. And if, if it's gonna be months of this cuz of the timeframe, then maybe that you have to pursue a different. Um, design or, I don't know, a different way to get rid of the bedrock. Rather than what you'd like to do is real fast and cheaper or something, I don't know.
Yeah, but you'd have to cover blasting, chipping and jackhammering. And if you want to set the same standards for the one that's going to make the most noise. Uh, then as Colin said, we're probably overre- overreaching.
Well, maybe you just say bedrock removal, which would cover all of it, right?
Well, so I think we don't have the, the research to come up with a noise level. So, I mean, tonight we, we're not gonna be adding a decibel level. I mean, we just don't have that information.
I'm just talking about the hours. An enforcement mechanism, so don't forget that too. You put something in there. You know, the, the question came up about enforcement. We have no enforcement on a lot of things. In South Burlington and in the state, so, you know, if you put something in there, you have to be prepared to how does this get enforced?
I mean, it wasn't.
I guess. A, a question on that regard is, is that something that like, you would have the, the noise ordinance say that ban? Like, uh, yeah, or like is saying that violating the terms of your agreed-upon plan? Is a noise ordinance violation automatically, like, and then, then it would come under the noise ordinance enforcement mechanisms? I, I don't know.
Well, but we did slow down BlackRock dur- and, and they had to stop until. An agreement was reached with one of their blasting. I mean, the city took, I don't know, we didn't take them to court, but we.
Right, there are different tools that can be um, applied. Um, there's tickets through ordinances, um, which have a maximum of eight hundred dollars a day. There's um, relief um, through a notice of violation of zoning, which is intended generally to be a. For, for buildings, because you have seven days to cure the violation, then you go to the Superior Court to enforce. It is, it's, it's not a speedy process. And then there is um, potentially also going to a court for a. Uh, stop work order, uh, that has its own process where a judge um, has to hear it and make a decision on it. So there's, there's different mechanisms, but each have their pros and cons.
Yeah, but am, am I correct in saying that we don't have anybody enforcing these regulations at this time?
We, we, um, there are enforcement um, powers within the city, yes. Um, we need to be mindful of the capacity, but there are mechanisms, there are people. There are capacity constraints.
Paul, is there, if, if we go this route where they have to have a plan, plan gets approved by the DRB, is there any way to bake into that plan? Consequences? Before, let me interruption for a second, I would certainly suggest that any plan or requirement of any plan be, they need to be able to provide the monitoring. Cuz we don't wanna put that on the city. If they're gonna be making the noise, they need to have the capacity, if somebody complains, to prove that they didn't. Violate it, to be able to go out and take a measurement. Cuz otherwise now who's gonna have the meter, who's gonna get the meter calibrated, who's gonna certify the calibration? That all needs to get put on the applicant. But within their plan, is there any way to bake something in that says, hey, if you're in violation of this? Your permit is pulled, you're in violation of your plan and you need to come up with a remediation plan before you can continue. And avoid having to go to court.
It's an interesting question, I think I'd have to look into it. There are mechanisms laid out in state law for enforcing land development regulations. It's either through tickets or through the other method. That's an interesting third question that I. happy to look into, but I can't answer on the spot.
But the, the uh, notice of um, not compliance, of non-compliance is gonna come from a resident who's gonna have a DB meter and measure it. So he's, the, he or she's gotta be a witness. The, the, the contractor himself, uh, sh- that's to take the measurements and and prove that they're not uh, um, making more noise than is allowed. Uh, that's, I think, questionable. The whole thing is complicated because, you know, I would, i- if this was going on next door to me, I'd buy myself a meter and measure it and then come and pester these guys.
There, there's a whole rabbit hole there.
Yeah.
About what meter and is certified to get.
Exactly.
A professional that has a certified meter and all that is extremely expensive, because we looked into doing it when we were thinking about taking legal action on this whole thing back in the summer of chipping. Um, so tha- that gets very complicated. So that's one of the things that I wouldn't want the city to have to, to pick up.
So, I'm just thinking about.
Yes.
I'm thinking about our process, so um, we need to kind of pick a route. It sounds like we're not pleased with exactly what it says, but it's still not clear, do we make a minor tweak or two tonight that we feel comfortable being able to do? So that there's something moved along, or do we hold it back entirely and really get the answers to all of these questions and, and technical advice? Colin?
How much time do we have to make the tweaks?
What?
How much time do we have? If you, if we can't do it tonight?
Well, I mean, I think we have time. Like, when does our, it's not like our hearing runs out, like we could.
No, your hearing doesn't run out. I think uh, from a, from a big picture perspective of all the LDR amendments, um, council's schedule gets more busy as you get into the end of summer. So just being mindful of their workload, but you know, this is your project until you pass it along.
Quick question for John, it's totally fine if you don't have an answer for this. It does sound like there's some interest in an hour restriction that goes beyond the normal construction hour restrictions is something we could, you know, conceive we come up with just a number tonight without consulting the experts. Do you have, as someone who's lived through this, do you have any opinions on what might be it, like, what might be a reasonable number for that? Bear in mind, if you make too short, this is gonna draw out the whole process of more weeks.
Yeah, as far as making tweaks to it, as long as we know it's either coming back or we're gonna continue to work on it, I'm as the one who suggested that we hold it back, I'm fine with doing that, if that works within the process. Um, I'm not used to doing things that way, but if that's an option, great, um, I'm, I'm fine. Um, yeah, I think, I think normal business hours, normal construction hours, I mean, kind of my understanding is you know, the, the, I think we do have like till eight PM, so I think it would be good to, to reduce that. I assume that till eight PM is an occasional thing or for the, the do-it-yourself homeowner who wants to do something after work in the summer. Um, the only ones I can see out there at seven night making construction noise, but so I, I would agree, I, I think putting an hour restriction in there from, you know, eight to five would be fine. It really, you know, if you do it, if you, if you get half the number of hours and it's twice as long, I'm not sure, you know, do, does it soften the blow or is it ripping off the Band-Aid?
Yeah.
They're both equally horrible.
I, I, I still, I still remember it's not quite as bad when there was a building going up near to me, they would occasionally do these twelve-hour days when they're trying to like hustle to get the foundation set before winter went in, so like, yeah, I, I, I'm just but it shortened the amount of period that they're going with, yes, I'm sorry, but I.
Yeah, and the normal construction noise, and I don't think anybody's really complaining to city council about normal construction noise or it's, it's just this, this really bad stuff. Um, I would also uh, suggest that we change that forty hour as you suggested and tighten that up a little bit, I think that would be good. And in the interim, just make sure that DRB knows that they should go ask for technical analysis if they get one of these before we get a chance to go over it again, because uh, they're gonna need it.
So what are the, the straw boat vote choices now?
So I'm gonna, okay, I'm gonna go back over the straw boat. So the straw boat, the A would be to pass it on to city council with the changes of de minimis hydraulic jackhammering duration that in no case may exceed sixteen hours. And the change of six F, six A to say the limit duration. Um, and at the end, instead of it saying time of day, E.G. morning, workday and evening, have it say eight AM to five PM. So those would be the two things that would be tweaks in this pass it on to city council option.
With the caveat.
With the caveat that we want to get some additional technical um, information before we can set the, the limit level of noise, decibels, and think about, you know, that balance between maybe a little lo- louder and much shorter period versus drawing it out, like really get some information before we set a number. So that would be the idea with that option. Do you have a question about the option?
Uh, maybe one more thing, you said to, to those two changes. I see the hydraulic action of limiting duration that no keys makes you forty-two full of sort of hours. I think it's one members of public mentioned. Is that again per instance, or is that like? Is that per instance or per project or something like, like, maybe like X number of hours within a certain time period? Like, for example, on National Forestland, you can camp fourteen days in any thirty-day period is how they do nothing, that's what you should have here, but I, I think we might need to say something a little more than just sixteen, because that doesn't.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my.
Uh, does, do you have a suggestion for sixteen hours over a project phase?
Or maybe like a certain p- time period, because if it's like, oh, we just found some, oh, we just found some, oh, we just found some that happens every three days.
Six-month period? To put some, six-month period. Sixteen hours over a six-month period, does that sound like something?
How many hours?
Sixteen hours in total?
Yeah, this is for the de minimis, to not have to do.
So they can still go over at this point, they would just have to put some documentation if they exceeded that.
Now we gotta generalize bedrock removal rather than specif- specifically.
I think you generalize bedrock removal and don't, at this point.
Well, but then, then it talks about hydraulic.
You can ship after five o'clock, but you can't.
Well, if it's not de minimis, that has to do a whole big plan, that was the difference.
Oh, that's true. Well, I, I, I guess if we overstep this, um, and we are asked to, or we are requested to go back to us to, to this, to rework it. Um, those people who do the development will let us know if that's a ridiculous number and we can change it, I suppose.
So that's option A. The option B would be to just remove it completely from um, the draft and continue to work on it in more detail until it's totally solid in the future. Which, we know we're not fast, so that's probably multiple months, I would say. Those are the, I am be, okay, so as a straw poll, who would be in favor of option A?
Which is making a little change.
Uh, you don't need to put your hand up. Okay, uh, that, so we'll go with that option for now, um, with and in my presentation to council, I will specifically make note of these items that um, we feel like would be important to add, um, but we wanted to make sure they had something on in front of them um, to move forward if they're comfortable.
Paul? Just one note that um, uh, in terms of the de minimis amount of hours, um, there's no magic to the forty that was presented, um, so that's, that's an adjustable number. Um, I think staff is a little concerned that sixteen might be tight. Um, because this is an area where um, the city has not regulated in the past and we don't know frankly, a lot of circumstances, the um, there, there is, it's not an uncommon thing for there to be some level of of um, bedrock removal with a project in smaller projects that we don't hear about. So the implications of it going above that number is that they need to submit a whole plan to the administrative officer or DRB, go through the review approval process, appeal process. So a, it's not a, you know, oh, three days later I have my plan, it's a, it's an extended process. Um, so just, you know, that's it might be tight from our perspective.
In those projects that you don't think you hear about, do you think they're bringing out large hydraulic equipment to do that, or are they mostly using jackhammers? Because they have unlimited jackhammer time.
So, um, I think it was, how many days? The, 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 the water tower project, for example, the city was doing, just used a hydraulic jackhammer for a short period of time. Um, we didn't hear anything about it. I would have to check with Public Works about how long they were out there for. But we didn't hear anybody ask any questions about it, so I don't know if it was. I could ask them, but I don't know if it was three hours or five days.
But I would think council would get some feedback if that were completely odd, off line, you know. Somebody that come to Tim and say, Tim, that's crazy, we need twenty hours, thirty hours, something. I think they would get that feedback.
Yeah. And I'm sure my projects have not covered the whole range. I was just thinking about some of the culvert projects we've done, um, where it's come up. But I'm sure there's, like, that you're saying, the water tower project or other projects might
Right, and I'm not, that, that one, that's not a perfect example, because that is one where it was likely known. It's the unknown ones that are the tricky ones. The ones where it's known, this whole thing is set up that you're not using the de minimis. You're, you're supposed to be encouraged to do your plan. Um, it's where it's an unknown feature of, you know, you've got your, all your contractor teams there and there's a corner of the building. And um, you know, making sure that we have thoughtful regulations, but that we're also not um, uh, stopping projects to sort of without being fully aware of the consequences, I guess, of both sides of it.
I mean, m- maybe if we want like, not like essentially make it, like, I, I guess, I guess the goal is we don't wanna have just, oh, some minor undiscovered like unexpected bedrock, we don't wanna have to, to stop construction for several weeks to like, go through the permitting process, because that assuming that it's not, assuming that it is a fairly minor kinda, oopsies that we missed a little rock, we didn't, we missed a rock here. Wh- I, would, would if we just specified may no in case exceed to- forty total hours for the duration of the entire project? I don't know if that, i- it is, it's a week, but that's a week total for the whole thing, if you go over a week. They, they need, it's not like per instance, it's like for the project. I, I don't know if that would be considered better than a sort, sort of duration in a certain time period.
I think I would just stick with the forty hours. We're, we're gonna come back to this and have um, the discussions and the um, nuances that I hope we can parse out and figure out what all the factors are and how you need to make develop, or allow development and bud- to happen, bedrock to be removed, but not um, annoy.
It's forty hours, but it's eight, eight AM to five PM.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think changing eight AM to five PM is gonna um, ring too many bells. And if forty hours sounds like a reasonable amount for a project, then I would go with that sixteen. If they're uncomfortable with sixteen, I would go with their discomfort for this first round.
Could we then at least maybe just add, s- make clear that it's per project, I guess reading it seems like, oh, forty hour, it, it feels like you could do multiple chunks of dri- as it's written, I'm reading it, feels like we could do multiple forty hours, like, oh, forty hours this month, forty hours this month, forty hours this month. Like, we're just saying.
That's a good clarity, certainly.
Yeah.
So, so I'm gonna change my straw poll suggestion to um, in no case may exceed forty hours per project. And keep the eight AM to five PM timeframe that I'd also suggested.
Yep, right, but you're gonna, you're gonna add that timeframe into that.
Yeah.
Because where we talked about it before was for the plan.
Yeah, and I think, I think that eight AM to five PM timeframe should be listed in both locations.
Yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not sure, I, you, you just addressed, like, what, what, what do you mean by project? Because is project house or is project neighborhood? Because, um, you know.
Project is the permit, isn't it?
It's the permit, so most, most of the initial, um, initial drilling is happening to put in the utilities. Correct? So that's one project, then every single house that comes along. Per application.
Per.
Well, well, I think one of the reasons that this happens over such a long period of time is, yes, utilities are put in, that's all done pretty much at the beginning of the project. Every single house that gets built, that has a basement, it's, it happens all over again, so.
Oh, yeah, no, that wouldn't count. You couldn't just do it multiple times over and over. That was the whole point of what Colin said. It does, if you're gonna be doing it multiple times, you need to be coming in and getting a plan in place and getting.
Right.
I guess I see it as if ten different people were to simultaneously make ten different projects on the same road, they all blasted, yes, they would all be able to do it on forty. But if it's developer doing ten as part of the same, like, master plan, then that, it would, and that's normally will be happening, wouldn't it be ten pe- ten simultaneous, completely different people? Did I understand, like, these plans are generally for the development is all one, pro- when I say project, I mean development really.
Well, but they do get built over many years.
Yeah.
And the projects do not happen quickly.
I guess by de facto, that means like forty per every couple of years, if you're just doing it every couple of years, I guess.
But, the, the case example with long drive, the, the long summer was the road. And then they're doing, they're selling each lot individually and building on that lot, and they're not necessarily the developers. They would like to develop the lot for you, but you can buy the lot and have your own builder.
Interesting.
So each of those is a different instance. So one, it was adjusting some sort of drainage, there was another one where they had to clear some, for a basement. So it's, and that's why it's spread over years and sometimes it's the same, sometimes it's not, but it's not a master plan. So if it was a master plan, a PUD, something like that, then yes, it would be one developer, one project, one permit.
Yeah, okay, that, ma- may put it this way, saying it per project is clearly imperfect situation, there may need to be the, we'll add this to the further discussion for a better way of phrasing this.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have our.
So we have our straw poll, let's get back on one person at a time. Um, you know, we're getting late, so um, other items.
S- so, um, just to close the loop on that last one, um, I if, if what you're intending is to be sort of the biggest project, then you could say something like shall not exceed forty hours over the course of the, for the highest level of applicable permits, so zoning permit, site plan or subdivision, wherever it is that is, that this is applicable. So that if it's your subdivision, it's the entire subdivision. If you happen to just own a single parcel and you have no other project, then you just have a site plan for it. So is that what you mean to say?
That's what we mean to say.
Have just a zoning permit if it's just a single family home.
That's what we're saying.
Okay.
So in this case, individual people who have bought their own lots is still under the subdivision plan?
Y- yes.
Oh, okay.
So the highest level plan applicable to this project, so if twenty-five years ago you bought something, a house in Butler Farms, you're probably not subject to the entirety of the subdivision of Butler Farms, because you just came in for a house permit today. But if you're doing a whole new neighborhood and you have a developer, then it's the entire, it's the neighborhood. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I would like to suggest we adopt Sandy's definition change for the long-term care facility. Okay, interesting nods. There was the typos of related to the transportation overlay district in the MSN for office general and, or general commercial and medical social. Is that generally, so we see some nods around that one. Um, and then, let's see, was there anything else that anyone noticed or wanted to bring up as a potential change?
Sorry, I was taking a note. Um, I got Sandy.
I got Sandy's removing the word supportive. What else, did you say anything else?
I said the table of uses M S N for the medical social and the general commercial should get the T O transportation overlay.
Yep.
Taking it out of the medium. Can we say that? We were taking the medium.
Oh, there was low and medium.
Oh, right, so general commercial was gonna be removed, would be, would be transit overlay only for medium. For, for medium scale in the medium neighborhood. And would be a remove and would be transit overlay only for all medical.
But it would be allowed for general commercial small outside of the transit overlay. In M S N.
Anything, oh, and then um, just to be clear, Kelsey had talked about the changes that were, were in our red line came out later, I just wanted to just generally make sure people were okay with them still being there. Nods, anything else? Those were the things that I had written down. I think that could be it. Okay, I, I'm not feeling like any of those changed the reports. Just to say that. Does anyone else feel differently about the reports? None of these changes seem big enough to have affected those. Okay, um, we're on to the potential motions.
One last thing, sorry. The uh definition of basement references seller and the seller says see also basement. Um, so the seller see also basement, we recommend leaving, but removing see also seller from basement, so if someone refers to it as seller, they'd know where to go. This is coming from, from John. Um, and then uh.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
Uh, removing reference to a seller in the definition of ground story, so it's a ground story, the first story of a building other than a basement. Currently it says seller or basement. And then dwelling unit, we would be removing references to a common seller.
That seems very good, so be using the word basement in general.
But keeping, keeping the one reference to if someone can thinks of the hole below a house as a seller and they look up the term seller, they get directed to the right place.
Right. Great.
And then Duncan, you had one other.
Oh, did you, did you find it?
Yes, so uh Duncan noticed that in section three point one one accessory dwelling units. Uh, it says the A D U and the accessory dwelling and, and any portion thereof must not exceed fifteen feet in height. Um, you change that um to twenty-five under certain circumstances, so I would recommend just deleting that subsection because you already addressed the height elsewhere.
Okay, if that sounds redundant.
So removing section three eleven A eight E. Thank you Duncan for catching that.
That was maybe in honor of Paul Ingalls. Shorter is better.
The Ingalls Amendment.
Okay, anything else? Okay, um, does someone wanna do the motion?
I will do it.
Can you turn on your mic Duncan?
I can, yes. I move to approve draft amendments to the South, City of South Burlington Land Development Regulations, number L D R four five oh one through L D R twenty-five oh seven with the amendments recommended by staff in this meeting's packet and the changes noted tonight and submit them alongside the previously approved planning commission reports to the city council.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, wonderful. Um, and then we have one more motion if folks are comfortable. Um, we didn't get any comments tonight on the portion of the official map that we're suggesting changes on, um, I just wanted to acknowledge that. Motion for?
No, they definitely reflected our conversations.
Somebody wanna read it? Okay, I have it here, I am moved to approve draft amendments to the City of South Burlington Official Map O M twenty-five oh one with the amendments recommended by staff in this meeting's packet and to submit them alongside the previously approved planning commission report to the city council.
I'll second that.
Or Michael's second that.
Okay, any discussion? Um, all in favor? Um, unanimous. Okay, and we are at nine twenty, we do have more items on the agenda. Um, but first, nice job everyone, we big body of work and thank you so much to staff for all the work on this.
Thank you.
It's been a big, large amount of work. Or do we still have a lawn or is it, it's getting quite late?
Right, so we had a small internal discussion, but Paul has, I think, one last thing about.
Okay.
Did you wanna, about the workplace, no?
Oh, just that, um, I, your last conversation, you talked about wanting to revisit it to bedrock removal. If that's something that you want to do, you should um, I guess, submit a proposed change to your work plan to council, that would be the procedure to do that. Um, I forgot under announcements, council approved your work plan yesterday. Um, so this is not an insignificant lift, so um, I think if that's something you wanna do, you could either do tonight or you could think about how you wanna phrase that and do it at your next meeting and in relaying the amendments, we can say that that's something that you've discussed and will be coming, I feel free if you don't wanna do it at nine twenty at night.
Well, I mean, it seems like that might be appropriate, we just said we wanted to make the commitment to make the change and inform the council of that, so it makes sense to be able to present that to them at the same time officially. Is it, is, what's, how hard is it to?
I think the only question is whether that means that something else is coming off your work plan. I guess that's the, because I think that this is an import, what I'm hearing is that this is an important subject to you that you wanna do. Um, it's not a, you know, twenty minute tweak.
I'm sorry, when do we get to work, look at our work plan?
You approved it in May and then council approved it last night.
Well, okay, maybe, it's a good point, so, so maybe it makes sense to, um, maybe what I should do is tell the council that we're interested in working on it, we understand they just approved our work plan and get their feedback on changing the work plan, does that make sense?
I think that they'll want your recommendation about whether it's added or changed, um, but I think, I think given that I think it's appropriate that you look to see if there's something else that you would change in your work plan as a result of this. Maybe you could relay and we'd happy to also relay that it is your intent to add this to the work plan. But before making a formal request, you wanted to look at it in the context of others to see if you wanna make a change.
That sounds like a good plan, so we'll put that on an upcoming agenda to revisit the work plan. And you said, um, number seven we're skipping for this evening, we're postponing.
Yeah, so um, we had an internal discussion and just decided that nine twenty was not the time to start a presentation about the economic economic development strategic plan. Um, it's something that is very important to the city and has implications for the planning commission's work in the coming years. Um, so it's not just receiving information, it's absorbing how that's going to change what, what is happening with this body, so it deserves some space and attention that would not be able to have today.
It would be good to review our work plan or refresh our memories on our work plan before we hear.
Yeah, okay.
Their ideas.
That sounds great, um, okay, then we have minutes of June ten. Very, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the minutes?
Yes.
Go ahead.
There was a kind of an intent was missing from um, under categories, uh, under item six. The warning, the public hearing, it's, I was quoted as uh speaking regarding the need for new lighting regulations, but it didn't say the reason that um, I that I saw the need for discussion of it, and it had to do with um, with the tier one A reviews um, under act two fifty, because um, the state currently um, lighting is a very imp- important piece of their review process. And if, I think they would probably if they looked at South Burlington's lighting ordinances, they probably would not let us do a tier one A review. Because we, we do not have, we do not have a qualified um, or correct lighting ordinance um, to, to cover those, those scale projects. So that was, that was kind of, and Paul suggested that I write in something to just change the minutes to reflect that, and I can do that. Because it's a little difficult to do on the fly, but just so you know, that was the intent, you know, it wasn't just wasn't just that I was bringing it up because I'm a pain in the butt about this issue, but it really is, I mean, you're not gonna be allowed to do tier one A uh reviews without that.
That's a good point, we had, we were, we had been talking about what are the things that our regulations don't do, the act two fifty would have been doing.
So my recommendation would be if you are comfortable with Donna proposing something that the motion be withdrawn for tonight, have Donna provide us in writing and then we'll give you an update on it for your next meeting.
Do it next time.
Are you okay with withdrawing your motion, Michael? Okay. Motion withdrawn, okay, then um adjourned.
You are adjourned.
Great.
Alright, thank you everyone.
Thank you everyone, good discussion tonight.
Thanks for coming in.
And welcome John.